Bonnie says, she's the boss.
I'm sorry.
We're ready.
You actually want to hear me?
All right. We are, we are going to call the meeting to order. Our opening ceremony will be led by Commissioner Kropa.
Oh, we want it.
Before we say the pledge, I wanted to have a moment of silence. We lost two community servants in the last week and a half. Lieutenant Randy Agruda with Grand Traverse Metro Fire, who served over 20 years with the department, and two Margaret Dodd, the former mayor of Traverse City.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please, Bonnie.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
Klaus?
Here.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Kropa?
Here.
Lathrop?
Yeah.
Max Bauer?
Here. Next is approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to our April 24, 2015 minutes? Hearing none, they stand approved. Are there any changes to our April 29, 2015 regular session minutes? Hearing none, they stand approved. Are there any changes to our May 19 special joint session with the road commission? Hearing none, they stand approved. This is our first opportunity for public comment. Bonnie, would you read the rules, please?
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. One, any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. Two, no person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer commissioners' questions. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. Chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
All right. You've heard the rules. Would anyone like to make public comment?
Georgia Durga, Director, Grand Traverse County Commission on Aging. I just want to invite all of you to our 40th anniversary celebration, June 9, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Civic Center. It's open to the public. We will be inviting all sorts of people, or inviting the media, but we wanted to give you a special verbal invite, invite, and I hope you can make it. Our theme is Ruby, because it's our 40th anniversary, and that's what 40th anniversary is. So, I hope you all can make it, and I hope to see you there. Light refreshments, too.
Will you send an email to remind?
You're going to get an invitation.
Thank you.
But we, I just wanted to let you all know, and let the public know.
We all know. I need an email. Would anyone else like to make public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda from commissioners? From staff? All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, support?
Moved by Wheelock, supported by Johnson. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. We have an agenda. Next, we have the consent calendar, Bonnie. It is once again your turn.
The purpose of the consent calendar is, is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. A, receive and file. Number one, resolution regarding Code Inspector Conference Sheboygan. Number two, Grand Traverse County Human Services Minutes of January 27. Number three, Grand Traverse County Human Services Minutes of February 24. Number four, Grand Traverse County Human Services Minutes of March 23. Number five, Northwest Regional Airport Commission Minutes of March 23. Number six, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Minutes of March 25. Number seven, Collaborative Meeting Minutes of March 26. Number eight, Commission on Aging Minutes of April 7. Number nine, Land Bank Authority Minutes of April 8. Number 10, Central Dispatch Policy Board Minutes of April 9. Number 11, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Minutes of April 16. Number 12, Traverse area District Library Minutes of April 16. Number 13, Department of Veterans Affairs Minutes of April 23. Number 14, CRA Project Management Meeting Notes of May 1. Number 15, Commission on Aging Minutes of May 5. Approvals. The Public Health and Safety Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 16, Commission on Aging Donation Report for 2014. Number 17, Commission on Aging Changes in Fee Schedules. Number 18, Commission on Aging Milton Bruce Whitkop Memorial Contribution. Number 19, Commission on Aging Senior Center Network Fund Balance Spending Request. Number 20, Staffing Plan Amendment, Senior Center Network Program Coordinator. Number 21, Resident Banking Software Commissary Services, Keith Commissary. Number 22, Grand Traverse Sheriff's Office 2015 Purchase of Investigative Vehicles. Number 23, Approval of MSU College of Human Medicine Affiliation Agreement. The Resource Management and Administration Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 24, 2015 Haller Licenses. Number 25, Governmental Center Generator. Number 26, Appointments, Community Corrections Advisory Board. Number 27, Tart Trail Signage Agreement. The Ways and Means Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 28, Google Apps Contract Renewal Through Onyx Networking. Number 29, Camera Surveillance and Recording Policy. Number 30, Resolution to Amend 911 Plan. Number 31, Letter of Authorization for Peninsula Fiber Network. Number 32, Next Generation 911 Projects. Number 33, Establishment of Concealed Pistol Licensing Fund. Number 34, Drain Revolving Fund Advance.
Would any member of the public like an item pulled from the consent calendar? Seeing none, commissioners? Commissioner Klaus and Commissioner Wheelock?
Number 34.
Number 34, Commissioner Klaus. Commissioner Wheelock?
Number 34 or number 32?
Number 30.
Well, it's 34, the Drain Revolving Fund. That's number 32 in my packet. So, I'm my, I'm my.
We have a, we have a revised packet.
All right. Yeah, that's the same one I wanted to pull, so.
All right. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar as amended, with the exception of item 34?
Madam Chair, make a motion, we accept the consent calendar as amended, with the exception of item 34.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Crawford?
Yes. He won this one.
Discussion.
Who's the buzzers, the Jeopardy buzzers?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, we have special orders of business. There is none. We have items removed from the consent calendar. We have item number 34. Commissioner Klaus?
It is my understanding that the five drains that were proposed have now been dismissed. Am I correct in that, Bob, that?
That's my understanding, and I did talk to the Drain Commissioner about it, and so he's dismissed all of those. And his intent, as I understand it, is to go back through the approval process.
So, with there being no new drains, with them being dismissed, and with us costing the county in the neighborhood of $4,500 without any, that the taxpayers are just going to pay at this point, and that doesn't include mailings per diems, and possibly other, I've got two townships with fees.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, we're $4,500, nothing's done.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just money out, so I'm not supporting the, funding the revolving fund.
I have a question for you, Bob. Sonny, did you want to say something?
No, I, I didn't support this revolving fund a week and a half ago, and I certainly wasn't going to support it tonight. You know, one of the issues in this revolving fund is additional monies were also asked for, for the Duck Lake Dam, that was going to be taken out of this revolving fund. And, you know, we've already expended a significant amount of money on that dam already, so, you know, the Special Assessment District was funded in 2011 for that dam, and to this date, we still haven't established the Assessment District. And I believe that four years to establish a Special Assessment District is an excessive amount, and I won't support that additional money either.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, one other thing I'd like to add to that, moving forward, Commissioner Klaus brought it several meetings ago. If they do go forward with doing meetings again, I would recommend, and I don't know if we need to make a motion or something at some point, but where they have the meetings in the evening, where those that are affected by any special assessment can go to the meetings. And I think having them in the daytime is, is not a good thing, so.
Okay. Dean?
Just wanted to make it clear for the record that Commissioner Wheelock, we have not expended any funds on the Duck Lake project at this point in time. The, the board did approve that advance in 2012, I believe. I did not record that advance, because when we closed the books in 2012 and 2013 and 2014, we did not have any expenditures, so I'm actually sitting on that until we have expenditures to cover.
Okay. Um, oh. Mr. Klaus?
Dean, would that be then, because there was, wasn't there $15,000 asked for in, $10,000 in the most recent?
Right. In 2012, in, in 2011, the Drain Commissioner had requested funds for the Duck Lake work. And I think the resolution was actually adopted by the board in 2012. It may have been 2011, but because we had not incurred any costs towards that project, I did not record the advance of funds from the general fund to the Drain Revolving Fund. Last week, or earlier this month, there was the, the request for the additional $15,000 because of the, the work on the five drains that were, that we're discussing, and the revised budget that the Drain Commissioner had provided. So, the total between the two is a $25,000 advance that the county would make to the, to the Drain Revolving Fund. Two separate advances totaling $25,000.
Thank you.
Okay. Bob, I have a question on this. Actually, and Dean may know the answer as well. It is within the road commission's right to request a drain, and under state law, a drain can be challenged, which is what I understand happened here.
Well, I don't know all the details. My understanding is there wasn't proper notice given, or at least there are concerns about whether proper notice was given. And according to the Drain Commissioner, he thought it would be simpler to just dismiss them and start over.
Okay. Dean, my question to you is, does, you know, I, it's my understanding by state law that when someone requests a drain be established, like the road commission, that the county has to have funds in order to do that, even if the drain is denied? Is that correct, or not?
I, I would need to research that.
Okay.
I will always tell you when I don't know the answer. I, I don't know the answer to that question.
All right. Well, in that case, I, before, since we do not have answers, I'm, I would recommend that we just take no action on this item tonight?
I, I think there's a question whether that money, normally the cost of legal services would be rolled into the Drain District.
Yes.
And, and paid off by the Drainage District. I don't know if there's a question about whether these legal expenses would be included in that or not. And, you know, I, I would point out that our office was initially consulted about this. We had offered to assist the Drain Commissioner, and for whatever reason, he decided to go out and employ this other law firm.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I didn't know he was doing that.
Okay. All right.
I don't see how the drain, the revolving drain fund really, whether it exists or not, or has money temporarily moved into it or not, has anything to do with this issue. If you're concerned about an invoice, the invoice won't be paid if it doesn't go through claims. And the money's not going to be put in the revolving drain fund unless there's an expense to pay. So, are you rejecting the $15,000 transfer? Is that what it is? Well, we already did that.
I'm, I'm objecting to, to any expansion of the revolving drain fund. I want to deal with each of these drains on an individual, one-on-one basis, based on what their projected cost is.
Because nothing has been spent. We just took $15,000 from one fund and allowed it, in the event that bills needed to be paid, to be moved to the revolving drain fund, because that's a reimbursable fund by the Special Assessment District for each two of the drains.
As I understand it, that's not the purpose of the revolving drain fund. It's specifically for drainage issues, and, and I'm not.
It's a reimbursable fund.
But I'm not willing to put county general fund monies in the drain fund.
Has anything been put in the drain fund, Dean?
No, but what, based on the fact that this was all in process, I have put, we have processed through claims and accounts, the board of determination, those individuals have been paid. We did pay one invoice in the amount of $621, and we had an invoice to Northwest Reporting, I think that was 750. Yet, we have expended, cut checks for about $4,000, but that was done based on the Drain Commissioner providing me with those invoices, and the understanding that these drains were moving forward.
So, tabling this tonight, or taking no action, does absolutely nothing for that? Am I correct? The bills were paid, it already happened. This action was an advance on a drain revolving fund. I understand your dispute, it's just this literally has nothing to do with it. You can make your claim or have your discussion about it, but to take no action on a consent calendar item that already has had $4,000 worth of invoices pulled out of it?
That cannot be paid out of that revolving fund.
But they were paid. I mean.
They were paid by the county, not, they won't, they, there is no drain district to put, to charge these to.
Right.
There's no drains. They can't be charged back to the revolving fund, because there is no drainage districts for them to charge to.
Well, it's a reimbursable fund, so the assumption is, according to my information, we're going to go through the board of determinations again. And I understand that all but one were approved, but now, okay, five of the six were approved, four of the five are appealing, something along those lines?
It was, it was five, and four were approved, and four are appealing.
Okay. So, the concern is that the appeals will be denied, the drain district won't be created, and therefore, no funds will be reimbursed to the revolving drain fund. Am I correct? Is that the concern?
Why, my concern is, why do we fund something that's not functioning?
And it's already been paid. We sent, okay.
Correct. What, what will happen here, depending on how this is resolved, if there's no, if, if you don't have the ability through a special assessment, if, if the drains aren't established, I mean, the costs at this point are probably going to be costs that are going to be either passed on to the road commission, or absorbed by the general fund, because it doesn't sound like you're going to be able to take these costs and recover them through a special assessment for a drain that's established. There's a, a large legal invoice. I'm not sure if those attorneys will waive those fees. That's a little over $11,000, depending on, you know, because of the fact that these drains are dismissed. So, it, it is an issue that ultimately could come back to the board for, you know, the, I guess the decision as to how those costs are going to be covered at this point. They, they were paid out of the Drain Revolving Fund, that's a county fund, but the whole purpose for paying those invoices was, you know, I had the understanding, I wouldn't, if I would have known that there was an issue with this, I would have never put them in for payment. But this, this has developed since last Friday. I mean, that was the first that I had heard that the drains were not going to proceed, but.
So, the action on the consent calendar, as far as receiving it, is it a?
Well, in, in my opinion, I mean, it, it sounds like the drain, this process is going to be started over, so the Drain Revolving Fund needs to have money.
Okay.
For the Drain Commissioner to do this work.
That would be. And, and whether you, you question the process or the invoices at all, the Drain Revolving Fund still exists, and could or could not be reimbursed based on the results of the new board of determinations. I believe Cass Road Drain District was the one that was not appealed, and I don't know that it, I don't believe that process is being redone, but don't, don't quote me on that.
I, I, I'm only guessing that it's going to be redone because of the, some of the people that were sitting on the board of determination were ineligible.
Okay. And, and as far as, Bob, I think, I'm going to admit, I've read the Michigan Drain Code, and.
Wow.
The Michigan Drain Code states that the sole determiner for the board of determiners is the Drain Commission. I don't believe the board of commissioners has any, any rights to state when the meetings should be, or how it should be. I mean, I'm certain we could pick up the phone and call them. I don't think that's an issue, but as far as a motion or something, according to what I read in the Michigan Drain Code, that is, that is separate of the board of commissioners.
Well, then, I, I am hearing, Dean, that we do need to put an advance in the Drain Revolving Fund from you. That's what I'm hearing.
And that would be my reckon, recommendation, with the understanding.
Okay.
And I confirmed with the Drain Commissioner that those costs would be reimbursed through a special assessment district set up for those drains.
All right.
Dean, is it possible, you know, and maybe you know, maybe you don't, I'm assuming that any costs that are incurred for the first go-round are not recoverable by the second go-round.
That would be my opinion, just based on how things, I mean, to me, that seems fair. I, I don't know how you can take these costs for drains that have been dismissed.
Mm-hmm.
And possibly even think that you could recover them through a, a special assessment, which would mean that, in all likelihood, it's highly probable that the general fund is going to have to cover that cost.
Okay.
So, that's going to amount to about $15,000. $4,500 that's already expended, and $11,000 that's a, a pending legal bill?
It, it has not been put in for payment, because Commissioner Klaus raised some concerns over it, and we're still addressing those, but I will call the attorney, and perhaps they will waive that, that work, but I'm going to make that request because of the fact that the drains are not proceeding.
Okay. So, I'm hearing from you, Dean, that it is your recommendation that we put additional funds in the revolving, in the Drain Revolving Fund?
Yes, it is.
In that case, I will make the motion that Grand Traverse County authorize an additional $15,000 advance from the general fund to the Drain Revolving Fund to provide the necessary funds for the drain projects currently in process.
I will support that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Crawford?
Yes.
Klaus?
No.
Wheelock?
No.
Kropa?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes. Motion carries.
And Commissioner Lathrop is abstaining.
Yes, he has recused himself. He's over there somewhere.
He's over there.
You can come back now.
You hear?
All right. Next on the agenda, Planning and Development, Public Hearing Request for Traverse City Place Amended Brownfield Plan. Jean, please come on down and introduce yourself to everyone.
Good evening. My name is Jean Durenzi with the Planning and Development Department. This is just an introduction to the Traverse City Place Amended Brownfield Plan, and asking for your consideration to schedule a public hearing for June 10 for consideration of the plan itself. With me today is Dave Van Heren from AKT, and Bob Cornwell, the architect for Grandview Place Properties. The Traverse City Place amended plan, as I indicated in your packet, encompasses 23 parcels, and the 23 parcels starts, I'll start at 145 West Front Street, which is on the corner of Front and Pine Street, goes across the street to 124, which is right next to the Record Eagle, across the river, and encompasses the properties that are, we are entitled the Warehouse District, is more commonly referred to. The amended Brownfield Plan is based on the environmental costs associated with new development that is proposed within this overall plan. There's three new developments that are coming on that have identified that environmental costs are needed. And the Brownfield Plan has been in place since 2008, but the environmental costs are not known until we know what the development will be on that site. The first project that's coming on is at 124 West Front Street, and 207, 211, 221 is all one development, which will be the Grandview Place Properties. And the last one is at, oh, I'm sorry, this includes also the Garland Street, which is a public infrastructure. They're redoing Garland Street, and we're including environmental cost for that public infrastructure component. And the next private development is at 145 West Front Street. Again, the, the cost for this amendment is a little over $7 million, and as you recall, this is a significant environmental process when it comes to, in this area. With the Hotel Indigo, it really raised indication that there's some off-site migration of cyanide, which has impacted the groundwater. And at 124 and 145, it is impacted by lead in the soil, and some ground, dry cleaning solvents that, that's impacting 145 and 124. Just as an indication on the taxable value, when it comes to Grand Traverse County, this is within side the DDA district, but the Brownfield Plan itself, when it was implemented, the taxable value was $1.9 million. That equates to Grand Traverse County receiving a little over $9,000 in an annual basis on all 23 parcels. With this new investment for 145, 124 in Grandview Place, the new taxable value for this 23 parcels is over $55 million, which is a 293% increase. The difference between this plan and plans that are outside of the DDA is the Brownfield authority, Brownfield capture is the state taxes and the ISD taxes. Since it's in the DDA district, the DDA captures all of the other local taxes. Another way to look at it is the, the Brownfield is state, we need state approval, will capture the state and ISD, and the local taxes will go towards those other public infrastructure components that is within the DDA plan. So, it helps implement that DDA TIF plan that we approved in 1997. This is just another identification of the tax base. On a regular basis, we receive $9,000 on all 23 parcels. On an annual basis, we'll receive $277,000 from these 23 parcels. The environmental cost is broken down, $7,482,000, 219 is the total Brownfield amendment, which equates to all environmental costs relative to 124, 145, and the Grandview Parkway. And this slide just shows how that's split up and divided amongst all three of the developments. The 124 West Front Street project is a five-story mixed-use development. On the ground floor, there will be underground parking to serve the residential development. The first floor is. The first floor is commercial. And then the second and fourth floor is residential condominiums homeownership. And there will be Boardman River improvements. We are working to, with 124 owners, to give easement to City of Traverse City for a public boardwalk, which as, if you remember, Uptown Development is a Brownfield. We received an easement from them. And that boardwalk will go up in front of, hopefully, the City Commission, Housing Commission. We're still working with them, and 305. And then it'll go around and hopefully right downtown. So we're just slowly getting the easements for the River Walk. This is the north and west elevation for the 124 West Front Street. And then I'll, we'll turn this over to Dave Van Heren from AKT to talk a little bit about the Grandview Place parcels.
Good evening. Dave Van Heren with AKT Peerless. The Grandview Place redevelopment, as Jean indicated, is at 207, 211, and 221 West Grandview Parkway. 207 West Grandview is Phase One of that development. That is at the corner of Garland and Grandview. The remainder of the development, or Phase Two, is the two parcels to the west. This development essentially encompasses the entire block east of the Hotel Indigo development. Phase One will include rehabilitation of the existing structure at 207 West Grandview and building a two-story addition above that structure. The first floor will be commercial retail space with eight to ten upper-level condominiums on the second through fourth floors. That's Phase One. Phase Two, at 211 and 221 West Grandview, is additionally a four-story building. It'll include complete demolition of the existing structures on those two parcels, construction of the four-story addition, along with underground parking below the structure to accommodate up to fifty vehicles. Here is a elevation, the north elevation of this development, along with the south elevation. It is a mixed-use development. Again, it's gonna be retail space, commercial space on the first floor, along with residential on floors two through four.
The Grandview Parkway Properties is a private investment of a little over twenty-eight million dollars. The 124 is almost thirty-six million dollars. The next steps, June 1st, the City Commission will be considering concurrence. And at today's meeting, I'm asking for consideration to set the public hearing at your June 10th meeting, which is your RMNA meeting, for consideration for approval. And just as a wrap-up, the overall investment is a little over ninety-two million dollars. The developer up-fronts all of the cost. They pay for the environmental work on each of the properties, pay their taxes, and we capture the incremental increase between the 1.9 and the fifty-five million dollars and pay them over a period of time for those eligible Brownfield activities.
That's all. All right. Commissioner Johnson?
Do you have a rough idea what the condos are gonna run on all these projects? Are they more the half-a-million-dollar ones, or...?
The 124 is over half-a-million dollars. And on the Grandview Place, where did Dave go?
Oh.
Grandview Place is about four-hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. And one other quick question. And I don't know if you or John have looked, I'm sure you have looked at this. Is there a point where we're gonna oversaturate commercial space? Or, I mean, how much more growth do we have for commercial space downtown, I guess?
Commercial space?
Yeah. With these mixed-use developments, at some point, you're gonna have too much space and not enough tenants. And I'm just wondering if there's some magical number that you've come up with?
The market really drives that. If you ask the DDA, they still need tremendous amount of commercial space. So they are looking to add more commercial. And as you know, the residential, no matter what, is, any residential is needed in Traverse City and Grand Traverse County.
Dr. Lathrop?
Thanks. I think you said that this land truly is polluted like Hotel Indigo. Is that true?
Yes, based on the studies that we have done.
This comes closer to the old-fashioned way of thinking about Brownfield. It's not a historical development, it's...
This is one of the components for Brownfield, and this is tied to the environmental component, yes.
Thank you.
All righty. Commissioner Wheelock?
Madam Chairman, I would move that we establish and advertise for a public hearing for the TC Place Brownfield Plan to be held on June 10th, 2015, at our RMNA meeting.
Is there support? Supported by Dr. Johnson. Discussion.
I just wanted to say to Bob, you know, I have similar questions. The thing about Brownfield that's interesting is that the projects don't just have to accommodate the Brownfield requirements, but they have to accommodate the individual zoning requirements. And I found that my particular view of the city zoning is very different from what the rest of us here in the townships and villages require. They have a very heavy commercial component to their zoning. And my, Jean knows all my questions on Randolph Street. You know, the component is, mixed use is a requirement. But it's not just that Brownfield is pushing that through. It's that the city wants that. My concern of saturation is half-a-million-dollar condos. I don't know that many people that buy half-a-million-dollar condos, but so...
You and I run in the same circles. I don't know with those people either.
Yeah, it's not a county commissioner buying the half-a-million-dollar condos. So that's where, I think there's been a real cognizant awareness of Brownfield. You know, they have to work with so many different requirements from the state and the local entities and that sort of thing. So that question does come up, and it's interesting. But it's not the saturation of commercial. I think it's more about the residential that's... But, you know, we heard this morning at our Brownfield meeting, the Uptown Project, Phase One is almost, what, in the fall? I believe it's gonna be open. They have sold four of the five condos, and they're pricey. So people are purchasing them. And I think that the property across the street, is it 305 Pine? Or the one on the corner? The big parking lot across the street from the hole in the ground.
305 West Front.
Yeah. That one is a mixed-use development, but it, doesn't it have market rate housing in it, I thought?
Yeah, it has a component right now for the Woda Group, which is a low-income housing tax credit, which is rental apartments.
And then that's a lot of the difference we see as rental versus owned properties and sitting on Brownfield. So just to share with you, I have watched a real interest in changing those sort of priorities. So I just wanted to say, I mean, they have certainly heard the concerns about that.
Okay, any further discussion? I would encourage you to get your questions ready for Jean at the public hearing. Talk to her between now and then.
One more thing, just so Jean can go and gets to go home.
Yes.
During Commissioner, during committee reports, I wanted to give a Brownfield update about the Park Place, but I just don't have the skills that Jean does. So she said that she would give us, we had heard at our joint meeting with the City Commission that we would be seeing a Brownfield application and then a Brownfield plan coming forward soon. And that has been delayed slightly. The Brownfield application hasn't even come before the Brownfield Board yet. So I wanted Jean to maybe update that because that was heavily publicized and brought in both boards, yet kind of stood still, so...
We have been, stood still is not coming before the bodies, but definitely a lot of work on trying to put an application together, which includes possibly the governmental center, but the Park Place project. And we're also looking at the Traverse City School District as well and how that can work within this Brownfield Plan or separate out the Brownfields. We're not, we're working on that. We do know that we want a rental housing component part of this and have a MISTHA component. So that is one avenue that we're trying to work on and how would we do that? And then the public parking is also, we're just trying to work through that and how that can work and be funded by the private developer and not on the backs of the county to upfront that cost or the city to upfront that cost as well. We anticipate that the Brownfield, the application will be in front of the Brownfield Authority in June. We had a letter from Ramkota, which is the developer, and they anticipate having that in front of us in June, which would mean that it would, a Brownfield Plan would not be considered until July from the Brownfield Authority and then consideration by the County Board and City Commission in August. So the plans have, went further out. So the dome demolition would not occur until the fall of this year if the Brownfield Plan is approved. So it's just a quick update on where we at. But we are doing quite a bit of work. We know it's a big project. And there's just a lot of components that we want a solid application before it's brought before the Brownfield Authority.
And it won't necessarily look like what we saw at our joint meeting. It might not necessarily have those four plans as we saw them.
More than likely, it will not.
Yeah, it will be, may not be separate phases. It may be more of a project.
But it might include some other properties and not have the ones, I mean, it's a fairly different plan. So I just, they listened. They listened to concerns, and I think there was a lot of, a lot of work's been going on, on it. But just for those that asked, it didn't just stop.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to schedule a public hearing for June 10th, 2015. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the 2015 Tax Rate Request Millage Request Report.
Jim Baker, Director of Equalization. And before you tonight is the Tax Rate Request for 2015. I filled it out with maximum allowable by law. You could change that to less if you so decide. So I'm asking for approval of that so that we can get our county millage on the summer bills legally. And then we also are approving some millage that would go on the winter bill. And if there was any kind of millage consideration down the road, then I would ask for an amendment to the winter millage if that happens to change. But because we levy some in the summer, I'm asking for this to be approved today.
All right. Is there a motion? Mr. Wheelock?
Madam Chairman, I would move to approve the L-4029 as outlined by the Equalization Director.
Is there support?
Second.
Move by Wheelock, supported by Dr. Johnson. Any discussion? All righty, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll leave this with Bonnie for signature.
Thank you, Jim. All right. Next, Budget Guidelines. Mr. Bot?
I will be brief. You have just an overview of the guidelines that we will use to develop the 2016 budget. This is similar to the process or the guidelines that we used in 2015. The budget will be compiled or produced in accordance with the appropriate state statutes. You know, the big item, obviously, is when we look at our staffing costs. But we will develop the budgets based on the current staffing levels. In some cases, we have contracts that extend into 2016 where they have the rate increase already identified, and that was one and a half percent in terms of the cost of living adjustment. So you can see an item for, you know, for those contracts where we have that year already agreed to with our labor units, that will be the cost that we will, you know, build into the budget. And for those contracts that expire at the end of 2015, we will also use that one and a half percent increase at this point in time to develop the initial budget. The, we are asking the departments to basically build a current services budget. I mean, they can ask for additional staffing or IT or capital, but they will have to explain those requests over and above the current staffing or the current services level. It does indicate how we will look at revenues, Item 7. You know, tax revenues have to be projected based on what we know at this point in time. You know, we know what our numbers look like in April. Jim probably left. But ultimately, the tax revenue for 2016 is based on your 2016 equalization report, which you won't have until April of 2016. So there is, there's always that estimation that you have to build into the budget. And I think we have a pretty good record of being very conservative with those estimates. We will also ask, we'll update our fee schedules and look at any potential fee increases to support the 2016 budget. One of the items that we're, you know, we have to kind of, I don't wanna say guess, but project is the increase in health insurance. We have requested that information, but that can drag on, you know, for several months before we really know what that cost might be from our benefits agent. But we are working on that. We will also review with the departments any vacant positions to see if those positions need to be filled. But initially, they are costed in the budget. But we will provide you with a list of those vacant positions. And as, you know, the last item which you approved, we will develop that budget based on the current millage rate. There's always a chance that with Hedley next year, the millage rate is rolled back. But we will try to be very conservative when we estimate those tax revenues. And then following that is the timetable that the departments are using to develop the 2016 budget. So I know that's a very brief overview, but the departments are currently working on their requests. And I am estimating the revenues in the General Fund. So it's in process, but it will take several months to complete.
All right. Dr. Lathrop?
Do you need a motion from us?
Yes, to approve the attached 2016 budget guidelines.
I saw move.
Is there support?
Support.
Move by Dr. Lathrop, supported by Commissioner Crawford, to approve the 2016 budget guidelines. Commissioner Wheelock?
Dean, in 2014, going into 15, we renegotiated all thirteen labor contracts. I can't remember, how many of them do we have to renegotiate for 2016? Because they weren't all three-year contracts.
I think there are five. And there may be the Circuit Court associations as well. I can provide you with that information tomorrow. I don't know off the top of my head.
My thought is, with the fact that we don't have an HR Director and we don't have a current county administrator, we need to be thinking about how we're going to move forward with negotiating those contracts. A few years ago, we did contract with a labor attorney to do them. I'm not sure we were highly successful in that. And I don't know if the results were what we thought we were going to get. But, you know, I think it is a genuine concern that we are now, you know, a third of the way through the year. And we have, you know, half of our labor contracts are gonna be open for negotiations again.
Okay. Any other discussion about the Commissioner Johnson?
Did we ever get any direction on the, isn't there one group? I think, is it the courts that was...
Circuit Court.
Underfunded?
Twenty-six percent.
Did we ever get any direction on being able to move?
MERS?
Yes.
You did make a request of MERS. And they initially, based on their current rules or guidelines, we weren't able to do that. But it required a Board of Commissioners request, and they did agree to that. But that is something generally that you would also include in your negotiations when you sit down and talk to the Circuit Court.
But we needed to get MERS on board first, which we did in January. And now this is something that we can have our legal representatives negotiate for us. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. And thank you for not mentioning, I skipped right over the budget adjustments.
Claims.
Oh, claims.
Claims.
You should have on your desk the claims for the month of May that have been approved by the Audit Committee. They total, they total seven million, six-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-ten dollars and fifty-five cents. I'm asking for your approval of those claims.
Commissioner Wheelock?
Motion to approve the claims as outlined by the Finance Director.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Crawford. All those in favor say aye? Supported by Commissioner Crawford. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. All right.
Madam Chair.
Old unfinished business. Oh, I'm sorry.
One question.
You certainly may.
For Dean, the timeline on the Headley rollback, when do we have an idea on decreased revenue for that?
Jim's not here. You're usually doing those calculations probably May and early June. With, with the L-4029, do I have that number right, that you just approved for the millage rates? That has to be, before he brings this report to you, he has to do that calculation.
Okay, so we'll know if we have decreased revenue prior to setting the budget?
Usually what happens, though, I mean, it's, it's a good thing. I mean, if your taxable value is increasing by, you know, beyond the amount that's allowed by law, that, that's what triggers the, the rollback in the millage rate.
I see.
So, if you're having a reduction in your millage rate, that means your taxable value is generally increasing, I think it's by more than 5%.
And so, that counteracts the decrease?
Right, you would, you would, it probably wouldn't hurt us significantly in terms of tax revenue if the millage rate were rolled back.
Great, thank you.
As long as we're veering off a little bit, Dean, how is the CPI been looking?
Well...
And for, for those of you who were not on the board, one year, we received quite a surprise, the CPI affected our revenue. But, Dean tracks it monthly now.
Yeah, th, this year, it's actually tracking unlike it has in probably the last three years. I mean, it's not, the, the rate of inflation has been relatively flat. But, one of the things the, the state will provide us in November with the inflation rate multiplier, which is the change in the CPI, which is used to, if you have a, a parcel or a piece of real estate that has no improvements to it, additions, losses, that taxable value will generally increase by that inflation rate multiplier. You'll get a notice from your assessor, usually in February, that says, here's what you're, you know, here's what's happening to your taxable value and your SEV. But, that, that's the primary or the main increase in our taxable value, that inflation rate multiplier. And then, you would have any additions, deletions, new construction. It, it's a real complicated process, but the CPI, that change in inflation is a huge part of our tax revenue. I, I will, actually, I'll, I'll bring something back to you in June to show you how that's tracking from, and for us, it's, it's on the state's fiscal year. So, they track that from October through September. And then, the State Tax Commission will send the Treasurer and all of the local unit assessors that information, so they know what, what impact that can have.
Thank you. All right. Roll call, Bonnie. We have a motion to approve claims.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Kropka?
Yes.
Lathrop?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Max Power?
Yes. All right, next, old unfinished business. Approval of FOIA policy and procedures. Mr. Cooney, your turn.
Yes, this policy and procedure is required by Public Act 4001 of 2014. We have to have procedures and guidelines in place by July 1st of this year. This was approved at Ways and Means substantially in the same format as you see in front of you. The only change we made, there, there was also a public summary of FOIA procedures and guidelines in your packet at Ways and Means. The only thing we added there were some email addresses, so that the public sends their email addresses directly to either our office, the sheriff, or the Health Department, depending on whether they're, who they're directing their requests. There, there are also a number of forms that were in your Ways and Means packet that are meant to assist the public in making their requests or appealing a decision of a denial of a FOIA request. So, I would ask for approval of these procedures and guidelines at this time.
Dr. Lathrop?
I make the motion that we do approve the new FOIA procedures and guidelines as outlined by Mr. Cooney.
Supported by Commissioner Klaus. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. See how we trust you, Bob?
We've got good reason to trust you.
I know we do. All righty. Next on the agenda is a proposed amendment to our agreement with Paula Segala, and as our temporary HR Director. Does anybody have any angst over this? Dean, would, do you want a motion to approve this, or will just head nodding be enough?
Good question.
I'll just, I'll tell you what. I would make a motion to accept the addendum to the Grand Traverse County proposal and agreement with our temporary HR Director Paula Segala as outlined in our packet on page 109.
I will support that.
Discussion. Commissioner Wheelock?
My discussion has to do, you know, and maybe it's just a title thing that I'm having a little trouble struggling with, that she is a temporary HR Director. I thought she was providing professional services on a contract basis. I didn't know that...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll, I, I will rephrase the motion.
I didn't know that we had named her the interim HR Director, so...
I, I said temporary, I meant contract. I appreciate the correction.
Okay. You know, I have, I have no problem with the fact that this is a contracted professional. I don't want anyone to assume by any sense of the word that this is an interim or otherwise HR Director.
No, it is not.
You know, I've, you know, I personally received a whole lot of flack about paying $600 a week for five hours worth of service. So, I, I, I want to make sure that we're all completely clear that this is a professional contract...
Yes, it is.
...that we're paying this person for. It is not a contract that she's filling an interim position. And be sure that the public is completely aware that when we hire an HR Director, that person will not be making $600 for a five-hour week.
Thank you, Commissioner Wheelock, for that wonderful clarification. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to new business. You know, it's amazing how three little words on a, on a, an agenda can just stir up so much discussion.
That's Bob Johnson. Bob Johnson leads the discussion.
As, as we all know, we are facing some financial challenges. You know, we, you hear me talk ad nauseam about our unfunded pension liability. You're going to start hearing me talk more about our unfunded, or very, very poorly funded OPEBs on top of our unfunded pension liability. We have some, we face some financial hurdles, and we all know that. The reality is that there's only so much government can do, or should do. And, we have several choices regarding Easling Pool ahead of us. We can close it, as Dr. Bob Johnson has said many, many times publicly, and, or, we can do nothing. We can wait until something breaks that we cannot afford to fix, and then close it. We can, we are looking at outsourcing the operations of the facility. There are many things that we can do with the pool. One of those things that we can do is ask voters, and I think the ticker put it best this morning, in asking the question in their article, do we still want a, a public pool? And, that would be a question for the voters. We don't have to go down this road. We, for those people that don't understand, while there is no specific tax tied to the pool right now, everybody in this room pays a pool tax, because everybody in Grand Traverse County that is a taxpayer is subsidizing the operations of the pool. So, we already pay a pool tax. So, before I, I, I like to think ahead, okay? I like to plan ahead. Before I, we, the Parks Board, begin discussions on what our options are, serious options at Easling Pool are, if one of those options presented to the County Board is a request for a countywide millage, would this board allow that millage request to go on a ballot? Because if this board would not allow a millage request to go on the ballot, then there is no point in asking the Parks Board to take a look at that particular item as a funding option. Again, this board may choose just to say, you know what, it's a 1970 facility, it's old, we should close it. It's, you know, it, the, we can't afford the repair bills. We'll, we'll have a little bit better idea once Johnson Control goes through there. But, I don't know what this board is thinking, but I wanted to ask, I want to get all the options on the table. I'm not suggesting that we're going to go ahead with a millage. But, if that is an option, if voters want a swimming pool, I think that's something that we have to look at. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, I mean, if I had to vote tonight, I would not support a millage for it. I, I think it serves the people in Traverse City proper. The, the people I represent, I know we always get into the county and district, but most people in Kingsley and Fife Lake, they think it's a waste of money. You know, I, I was at the Parks and Rec meeting and had a good education, which I hope you'll share tonight, about the pool, and about everything there at the Civic Center, that nothing was built by the county. And it was almost an unfunded mandate, if you will, that the pool was put in place for us to maintain, for us to pay for. Yes, you know, there, I've seen online talks about improper management, this, that, and the other. And, given the age of that facility, I don't think that's necessarily an issue. I think the issue is, who's using it? You know, I, I sent you a few questions, probably late, and I'll probably send them, is Christine still here?
She's hiding in the back.
I'll send her together.
She was ducking down.
Because I, I think, I think, if we're along with this, we need to know what demographic is using the pool. Because if there's, you know, if it is mostly people within the city, then I think we should be in talks with the city to see if they would help fund it. I know that you've, you've ordered or allowed Christine to start talking with the Y on other issues, which is wonderful. And I, right now, I would not support a millage. I'll keep an open mind, but I think we still have a lot of other options the Parks and Rec can look at. I, I mean, I would rather see the fees increased personally, but...
We did that.
Yeah. You know, I, I have said many times, people are voting with their feet and with their dollars. And, the real question is, as we look at that facility's future, how many new members and how many renewals that we are, that we are getting. That is something we are going to have to look at, and certainly would weigh into my decision regard, whatever. Dr. Lathrop?
Can I put you on the spot? How many people, how many members?
Chris, come on up to the podium, please.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
And introduce yourself. Oh, no, she can, she can do it.
Do you want to cheer Parks and Rec up there, too?
Yeah, you can pull him up.
No, he's the president.
Hello, Commissioners, I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation. How can I help you?
You could give us your name, so the public knows who you are.
Chris Erickson.
About how many people have a membership to that pool, just ballpark?
Let me take a look. We just did our report last week, and I don't remember off the top of my head.
Well, shame on you.
It's the one question she wasn't prepared for, knowing her.
I know.
She's all prepared for everything. Oh, I have the number of fees, hang on. And this is live, too. I gotta love it. It appears that right now, for the first quarter, we had 72 memberships, full-on memberships. But, that's not counting all the other types of memberships that we have, so I guess...
How many, how many people do you think use that pool?
On a daily basis?
Is it 300? Is it 500?
I would say probably at least 150 a day, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I can look those numbers up and be more accurate. I think that would be a great next stop, certainly.
You know, here's what, what bothers me, to be quite candid about. I, I agree with you, Dr. Johnson. I think we should close that pool, and here's why. It's going to cost you a million dollars to fix it. It costs us...
Yep.
$300,000 a year to support it. What we're really doing is, we're, as a county, underwriting a private health club for 300 or less people. We have almost 90,000 people in the county. You know, and the Y is here. I just think, you know, we've got a $44 million debt to look at. We've got the OPEB debt. We've got another unfunded liability, which is a river restoration. I don't know how you want to look at it, but we're going to have to pay for it. And other things, this is just ridiculous, I think.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that there's not any warm and fuzzy to talk about the possibility of a millage. I'm hearing that. Look at Ron Smile. You going to say yes or no?
No, I, I could not support a millage.
All right, all right. That's all I wanted to ask. Wasn't that easy. Commissioner Wheelock?
Well, I was a little disturbed to open my ticker this morning to see the discussion about the county millage to fund the swimming pool. You know, I think that, that's a discussion that certainly should come from Parks and Recreation if we're going to have the discussion, not something that I should, I should hear about from, from a local media distribution. But, you know, I think the thing about it is, we need to remember that the Easling Pool does provide a public component. You know, it provides swimming water exercise for the TBA ISD, the special needs kids, and those, they don't have the other options. We have seniors that use it for the senior water aerobics and others, that, you know, this is their only true form of exercise. They, many of these individuals may not be able to afford or may not desire to have a membership at the YMCA. When I was Board Chairman in 2007, 2008, we had an ongoing discussion with the, at that time, Director of the YMCA and members of his Board, Board of Directors about possibly contracting with them to manage the pool on our behalf, and basically giving them the pool for a dollar. But, I was firmly committed at that time to retain a public component, and, and they weren't interested in that. You know, I, there are people in our community that depend on the pool, use the pool, that do not have the ability or the means by which to own a YMCA membership. Last week, I had opportunity to do a roundtable discussion on WTCM, some of you may have heard, and I was invited to do that, and I did participate in that. We heard from the Y Director that there is more need for water activities than they can possibly provide in our community. He, he firmly believes there's a need for at least two pools, if not more. You know, yes, our facility is old, it has its problems, but, you know, when I, when I read articles that say that it hasn't been taken care of, if this facility hadn't been taken care of very effectively, we, we wouldn't even have it by this time. You know, it's, it's not any different than our jail. We've got a, we've got a core jail that was built in 1962. If our facilities people and our staffing that were working in those facilities weren't doing a great job, we wouldn't even have those facilities that were able to be used in today's world. in today's world. You know, I just, we, we need to have more and more discussion about, about the swimming pool, there's no question about that. But as far as I'm concerned, it's a public service portion that we provide. You know, according to Dean's numbers that he's provided me, we supplemented the Easling Pool last year to the tune of about sixty-seven thousand dollars. That's not two hundred thousand, it's not three hundred thousand, according to Dean's numbers.
That's not full costed, Commissioner Wheelock, and you know it.
Well, I, I don't know. My Finance Director of this county tells me this is what we supplemented the pool for. So I'm not sure whether I'm supposed to believe his numbers, or if I'm supposed to believe your numbers. But the fact is, the Finance Director tells me we supplemented the pool last year to the tune of sixty-seven thousand dollars. Now, do we, are we going to put on the ballot a grocery list and let people discuss what they want, or choose what they want? Are we going to put on there how much it costs us to operate a probate court referee, so we can talk about how much we spend on the services that are provided to youth by our probate court? You know, we provide hundreds of services in this community, all of which cost the taxpayers' money.
And all of which have been digging a multimillion dollar hole, which you have been digging for years, and this board is trying to undig it.
We are, I'm more than willing to have discussions about, about digging out holes or cutting out services, but we cannot talk about cutting services unless we're willing to cut about services all the way across the board.
That is ridiculous.
Yeah.
Dr. Johnson had his hand up next.
Yeah, I mean, you, you touched on one of my major reasons for looking at the pool. We've got to look at the services we provide. We do need a new jail at some point. I mean, you know, we can't continue to dump money into services that only a few people use. At some point, we have to look and say, what are we providing? Who's benefiting from it? Can we not do that? There's a lot of places do not have county-run pools. You know, I think if left, you know, I think there could be other alternatives, and I, my big fear is the money that we're going to have to dump into that facility. And, I mean, we're looking at four and a half million for the dams, you know, who knows how much still for Cass Road, unfunded pension liability.
OPEBs are six.
And...
Six million.
You know, we, we are going to have to build a new jail. We're, you know, the size may be up to this, you know, discussion, but that facility's in, in bad shape. All those facilities in this county are in bad shape.
Okay.
Where do you start dumping money into?
Dr. Lathrop?
Yes, I think Commissioner Wheelock is right. There are people that depend on this because they can't afford a membership. But that's true for where I work out at Fit For You. Should the county supplement Fit For You memberships because people can't afford to work out there? I don't think we should be in the pool business. It does cost a lot of money, it's going to cost a lot of money to fix it. Keep in mind, everybody, forty-four million dollars. That's, maybe this year, but next year for certain, it's going to actually be on our budget sheet. We're not going to be able to hide that number anymore. So, something's got to give. And a lot of money's going into this old facility and benefiting a very few people.
Commissioner Matz? Go, go ahead, Christine, and then I'm going to wrap this up, because I basically got my answer to, to my question.
I just want to point out, Commissioner Lathrop, I believe we have between about three hundred and three hundred and fifty members, if I total up Masters Exercise and the regular memberships, right now. But we'll go back and get an accurate total, and I can certainly share that with the Commission.
Interesting to see what percent of the population of the county that is.
Yep. That makes, makes it very good sense.
It's very low.
I can tell you, we spend seventy percent of our county budget on the Courts and the Sheriff's Department, we manage three to five percent of our population.
We're digressing, I want to bring it back, I want to let members of the public speak, and then we're, and, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Crawford.
I didn't get to speak.
I'm sorry.
I know. Sunny is our self-proclaimed historian, but I do have something prior to you being on the Board I'd like to share. This was submitted to Parks and Rec by a Dr. John Spencer. Lots of people know him as the guy that built the Holiday Inn, or something like that.
And started Big John Downriggers.
There you go. But really, he also served on Parks and Recreation and with the county. And out of the kindness of his heart, he shared a bunch of old documents with us that predate every single one of us in this room and our interest in the county. And I read this to our Parks and Recreation Commission, because I thought it was so interesting. And this comes from October of nineteen seventy-three, from the County Board of Commissioners. Apparently, at that time, they had different committees like we do, and one of them was called Buildings and Grounds. So this was respectfully submitted to the County Board as a recommendation from their Grounds and Buildings Committee. The very last paragraph, oh, just to give you a, a history of it, Easling Pool was opened by a group of citizens. It was a volunteer thing. And they foreclosed and lost the pool to the county in a very short amount of time, and therefore, the county was left with it. So the question came before the County Board at that time, do you want a community pool? Do you want to reopen it? And this is what the County Board of Commissioners says, and I think it's critical, because they're sitting, we're sitting in the same seats they sat in. Says, "We recommend that the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners pledge their support to reopen and operate the building and the pool. But, with the provision that the City of Traverse City, the Traverse City School Board, and Northwestern Michigan College Board agree to pay their fair share of the operating costs." Now here's the critical part, nineteen seventy-three. Without this support, the county simply cannot finance the reopening and operation of this pool. Forty-two years later, we're pretending that we can do something that the County Board told us that they couldn't do, the year I was born. You know? I scrolled through the documents, and I came upon a resolution where the City of Traverse City has agreed, whereas the City of Traverse City has agreed to pay fifty percent of any loss in the pool. They already have losses. The year the pool opened, they already have losses. Above ten thousand dollars, their share not to exceed six thousand. And we're looking and researching right now to find out what happened to this agreement, and where's the contract. I have been the one that has been resolute in trying to save this pool, which has drove everybody crazy. I think we can save the pool, because I think our community can support two pools. But the key word there is "community." I don't think the County Board can support two pools in a community. I think that they are correctly, they were correct back in nineteen seventy-three. Where's the City of Traverse City? Where's NMC? Where's TCAPS? Where's TBA ISD? You're correct, our last standing contract is the special needs kids. My son was one and used the TBA ISD services at the pool. I have all, people know how critical they are to the autistic therapy that goes on there. But I don't think that every single person in the county has to pay for my kids' therapy. And I don't think every person in the county has to pay for the senior citizens' aerobics, even though it's a super cool class. I don't understand why we aren't reaching out and asking people to pay their fair share, just like our predecessors told us that we had to, or we could not keep the pool open. And one of those is a millage. I'm not a big millage supporter, we all know that. But I was a very big supporter of the Road Commission Millage. They did it right. It was small, they had to have proven results, and then they would prove the results and go back. And we all hate our roads, and I think we went out by a very small margin and approved that road millage. And I haven't met a person that's been disappointed in it yet. I take you back to last year, although I sincerely disagreed with our previous administrator in his use of plugging a budget hole with the taxpayers, I did agree with the nine-one-one surcharge, because you know what? We are now fixing thirty-year-old antiquated equipment that is putting the lives of our citizens in danger every single day. And so we go to the pool. The pool is also behind. I'm sorry, I put a jail and a nine-one-one system before a pool, as much as I love the pool. But there are people that love pools out there, just like I do. Let them decide. Let them come forward and say, we will help. I mean, ultimately, I would like to see the YMCA enter into a agreement to manage the pool. However, that doesn't solve our million-dollar repair bill that we all know is coming. I don't want to wait until it, it breaks and we close down the pool and lock it up. I want to fix it now. And I really believe that we have the support of the community to do this. And I think we should put pressure on partners like TCAPS and NMC in the city. It lies in the city. I don't understand why it was, and it, something that was okay in nineteen seventy-three, but it's not okay to bring it up now. We don't need to wait until the pool has to be closed. We, we don't. I think we can ask the community to help us.
Commissioner Crawford?
I agree that it, it really, we need more community support for the pool. One thing that I know the community very much values around is the trails, our whole trail and recreation system that we have. And you know, different, we sponsor certain parts of the trails, we are responsible for certain parts of the trails, the city's responsible for other parts of the trails, and the, the different townships are responsible for different parts, but it's a whole system. So why, if, if, if this is so good for the community, the whole community needs to support the pool. The city, the schools, everyone who has the opportunity to use that, it should be, if, you know, there's a resounding, please keep our pool, we need the community's support to please keep the pool. I don't agree that we should, that we should close it and just leave a hole sitting there that has all this potential to be something very community-focused and very community-oriented. I, I do think it's terribly underutilized, very underutilized. And we need to work on that, definitely, to get more community partners.
Commissioner Crawford, I really appreciate that comment, because I did reach out to the Y, and we are looking at having them help us with operations. And I'd like to take this opportunity to respectfully and sincerely ask this Commission, this pool is funded through the end of the year, if we could at least try through the end of this year to get something going with the Y, and maybe that'll free up our resources to, you know, reach out to the community and perhaps find some fundraising opportunities beyond the tax base. That would really be the ideal way to go. I would hate to shut the light off. I mean, we might have to, if one of the mechanicals certainly goes, we know this. But at least now, in the eleventh hour, we can try and make a plan to get people to rally around that, and to really look at it. A plan has never been made to keep the pool going. We do the best that we can with the resources we have, with our facility staff and our, certified pool operators on staff. We really care about the pool and do our best, but we haven't been given everything we need, because it is a county pool, it's a matter of the fact. So I just wish we could have till the end of the year to try and do our best to reach out to the community and get support, rather than just flip off, flip the switch and leave a hole and not service those user groups who, who we've already signed on through the end of the year, not have that option out there and time to really work with it. Because once that light goes off, it's a done deal. It's not going to go back on again, I don't believe.
That's not necessarily true. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, I don't think anybody on this Board's going to circumvent the Parks and Rec Committee. You know, I think we're going to abide by whatever they come up with. Even though I'm foreclosing, I'm not going to sit here and rally and, and go around everything. So I think we still have that process in place. I don't think that's, that's an issue.
Dr. Lathrop?
Well, I, you know, if, if the community can come up with a way to support it, I, I don't want to close it either. But we still have some big debts to pay, so...
Okay, I'm... Well, Bob had mentioned, too, the history of the Civic Center. It's just a fluke we have the pool. It truly is a fluke. I mean, the ball fields were built by the American Legion, the storage building was moved from Camp Pugsley, Howl Arena was built by Friends of Ice. The, the opening part of the Civic Center building was built by a couple who lost their teenage son and wanted a memoriam for him. The pool building was built by Easling Pool. The facilities building is the chicken coop from the former Northwest Michigan Fairgrounds. The playground was built by a community group. I mean, this is, and, and they foreclosed. That's how we ended up with, with a pool. So, I think, I think our county staff is to be commended for forty-two years of running a pool that was never meant to be run by the county. And they're exhausted and overrun, and it's time to bring in partners to this, to save something I believe can be saved. The Y would be ideal, but we still need an operational millage of some sort to put the appropriate money into fixing this pool. Because we're not going to find a million bucks out of the County General Fund to fix the pool. And that's just to bring the pool, that's not to make it super cool and make it look like the Y. This is literally to keep it running. So, we need something more solid. I, I don't know, raise your hand if you're sick of hearing the pool come up every year at budget time. You know, I am. I like to fix things. I don't like to kick the can down the road. We've been kicking the pool for forty-two years. We, let's fix it. If it matters, fix it. If it doesn't, we close the door.
All right, now, I will open it up to the public, Christine.
I'm up the pool.
If you wouldn't ma, mind, ma'am. You need to come up to the podium, and please give us your name and address.
Bridget Green, 304 Waxwing Drive. And Ms. Alicia Crouppa, I totally agree with your comments on the pool. If it does cost the county sixty thousand plus dollars a year, that's a huge drain on the budget. Can't really support continuing to keep that open, if that's truly what is going to cost the county on an ongoing basis. I'm wondering what's going to happen to the Civic Center property in general, once you lose the pool? What's going to happen to the ice arena? Will that, does that stay open? Is that separate?
That stays open.
They're all separately.
Because we already had to remove the playground, right, because of contamination?
Well, no, it, it, it was, it deteriorated, and we're trying to rebuild, we're rebuilding one right now.
For safety purposes, okay.
We're already started on the project.
So I'm just wondering, kind of, what's going to happen with the Civic Center, it's a valuable piece of property overall. Wondering, a couple of thoughts, was the ISD should have an interest in that pool. We have, was it Cherry Knoll Elementary up on Old Mission Peninsula, has a dedicated classroom to AIS students. Traverse Heights Elementary has a large special ed population just down the road. You got, what, Eastern Elementary, very close by. I don't know that all elementary schools in TCAPS would participate in using the pool, but there certainly are some autistic spectrum classrooms and other classrooms that might be able to utilize that. You might have a problem with TCAPS, then you have to have transportation to and from the pool. And I can't imagine those classrooms utilizing the pool more than once a month, off the top of my head, but I'm not a TCAPS employee. But I think it would be something to pursue, definitely, getting the community involved. I'm thinking also, physical therapists, who might be starting up on their own, who need pool facilities to offer therapy one-on-one. Is that something that could be, wouldn't bring in very much income, but it might increase the value of the pool as a community asset? And, of course, NMC could be one, too, that offers classes, is, what do you call, adult ongoing learning classes for deep water aerobics or anything like that. So, anyways, just for your consideration, I totally agree with what you said. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't even know whose phone that is. I'm going to have to hand it over.
My name is Mary Wadzine, and I live at 3263 Proudie Road. Previously lived in Section One of Grand Traverse County for a number of years, and now live in East Bay Township, so I represent two, two. My questions and comments tonight are regarding, regarding the pool, are that, even when I lived out in Section One of Grand Traverse County, I brought myself and my children into the pool and used it on a regular basis. I am also a member of the YMCA, however, I care to use and choose to use the Civic Center grounds, both for walking, swimming, and other activities. It is closer to my home in East Bay Township now, and I just, I just like, I like the pool. It's a great pool. My concerns are, is a, some of our problems with budgeting have to do with misbehavior in budgeting previously. And you've mentioned that you're going to be looking at new ways to look at budgeting. You're going to some training on that, we're hiring a specialist to help us counsel in that direction. And it seems odd that this is becoming a major issue prior to us having gone through that process and being able to determine what the county people want, what the organizations want, how we can budget, how we can spread those monies around. So I would like to request that perhaps we include this in that, in that option that we're working with, with the new way of budgeting. Because I think that there may be, there may be more people here than, than just yourselves who may or may not use those, those facilities, that may not see the value in them. I grew up in a city downstate where every single one of our junior high and our high school, so three, we had three pools in our, in our city. I was surprised when I moved up here and we just had one, and it was for the whole county. As a public citizen, a private citizen, but also as a business owner, I would like to offer myself as time to help with the Board, to be able, the County, Parks and Rec Committee, to find ways to do fundraising, to, I mean, all of our ball diamonds have advertising up, whether it's the Tigers or what have you. There's ways and things maybe we haven't explored, that maybe they just don't have the staff for, that as a citizen slash professional county kind of a board can come together and actually explore those things and spend some time twisting arms and shaking pockets. And, and I would like to volunteer myself, as to be able to help with that, because I think that there's ways to get funding that we haven't maybe looked at, whether it's going back, as Elisa said, about the old contract with the other governmental and school communities. But I think as a private, as a, as a business owner, I would contribute money to put up a sign if it helped the school, if it helped to keep the pool open. We did that with the swim team, when my kids were on the swim team. And I just, I just hope that you guys would take your time to make this decision, and maybe allow some citizens to get involved and help, to see if there's other things that maybe we have overlooked other than just closing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Anyone else? Kathy?
Hi, my name is Kathy Coffin Sheard. I reside at 415 West 7th Street in Traverse City. I haven't met some of the new board members. My name is, my na- I'm, I'm actually a master swimming coach at the pool. I'm also coaching, I'm actually offering some practices at the YMCA. It's going both, it's growing great in both facilities. The pool is well-to-use. I think for you, if you haven't been to the pool during the busy times, there are happy people. They want to be there. They want to exercise. A lot, a lot of the, I'd say a lot of the population, even my group is probably, which is 66, currently 66 members of the pool. 62 of them have full memberships of the pool. And they also, I'd say the average age of my group is probably between 45 and 50, maybe 50, 55 years old, somewhere between like 50, I'd say average 50. It's not a younger generation, younger population mostly in that facility. Water's water to us, especially master swimmers. It's more about being together as a group and encouraging people to be together. So that's just one group that uses the facility. And I, I believe that the pool should remain open. I applaud you bringing that up at the Parks and Rec meeting the other night, Commissioner Krupa. I thought she's my hero because I had thought about a millage, but I was like, I can't propose a millage. I'm just, I'm just a citizen. But I think it's a great idea and I think you'd be surprised at how many people will step up to the plate. And finally, I mean, I've only been, lived here in Gravita Rose County for five years and every year we've heard the pool's going to close. Somebody has brought it up. Somebody has, has said that it's going to go away. It's still here. People want it. We will work hard. We will knock down doors. We will beat the streets. You give us a mission, you give us a task and we'll accomplish it and we will, for, when we, and just in retrospect, we, we, another person and I had started the Friends of the Isling Pool. And while the Friends of the Isling Pool was a great group, nobody, nobody was willing to kind of, Friends of the Isling Pool is not going to raise $750,000 for a Dectron. It needs to be a bigger mission. It needs to involve more. And that, once that is taken care of, then all the other fun things can happen at that facility. And I really believe that. I really believe that we need this pool. I know with, with Wendy Trut and the, the facing with the drownings in, in the areas and all kids learn, need to learn how to swim, the Y is teaching the third graders, the high schools learning, what happens to our sixth and seventh grade population, they should also be able to learn how to swim or reiterate and reteach them how to swim, so.
Anyone else?
I do want to clarify too. Commissioner Max Bauer has been just as involved in the millage talk as I have been. Certainly, we threw that around for a while, I think about a year ago. So she, she has really stepped forward too with ideas and has been a big part of it.
Good evening. My name is John Byrne. I live at 3535 Silver Farms Lane. You know, there's no more important thing in life for a child or an adult to simply play and recreate. And that facility offers that to a lot of people in the county. It's important to keep that around. I think there, the facility itself has been really underutilized and I think there were some good suggestions tonight with looking into things with the college. Most community colleges in the areas of states even have their own pools that they use for community memberships and community uses. The, the schools, the TCAPS high schools, I think there are, is there one team now?
Yes.
One team now. It used to be two. They combined, but they use that facility as well. I think if you inundate one pool in the county, which would be ultimately the YMCA, there'd be less and less opportunity again for people to actually get an opportunity to swim and learn and be safe. So going down to one pool and putting everything on the YMCA, which is a membership organization, it's not a, it's not a county anything, it's a membership organization. It's expensive for a lot of people. So keeping that pool open is an important thing. And I also think that even a millage will probably be the necessary, necessary piece of that, but there's other recreation opportunities that can be added on to that facility that would meet a need of the community. Basketball courts, indoor courts, volleyball, a community space, expand it from what it is now. There's many things that, that building can be used for if we put a little effort into it and decide to do that as a community. And I think with the right vision and proposal, many taxpayers would probably support that. I know I would. The pool costs $67,000 a year. We spent a lot of time talking about that cost, that real cost, unreal cost. I don't know what it is. But that's a drop in the bucket compared to other things that are out there. And I can't remember of any county department that actually makes money. So that's what the government is for, is to provide opportunities for its citizens to do the right thing. And play is our most important one. It's where we learned everything, was in the Kennedy Garden Playground. If I have any share, I hope that it stays around. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Justin Reed, 630 Cops Drive, Apartment 1B, Traverse City, Michigan. I just want to say, I think that the direction that we should go for the pool is give it a year for fundraising and for the community. But after that first year, if we can't save, well, then we can't save it. It's a cost. I mean, we have other recreational things here in Traverse City. We have Chart Trail, which is very successful because their fundraising is really good and the city and the county doesn't have to pay for maintenance. The fundraising for the Chart Trail does that itself. And there's other opportunities. I mean, we've got one of the Great Lakes and we've got beaches and there's volleyball courts over at the, over at the beaches too. I just, I, I guess maybe other communities don't have pools like we do, or I mean, it's pool, not pools, but you know, we've got one pool. But if it's underutilized and the rest of the county is not using it, well, then that's a waste of money. And if you can't afford anything, then you should not get it or you should not go ahead and have it for a amount of time. Just like if you're going out and buying a pocket watch. If you can't afford it, you can't afford it. And if we can't afford the pool, then we can't afford the pool. And just, if we can't afford it, well, then we can close it and just get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Matt Scheck, Traverse City, Michigan. I used to live a down county Kingsley area, so I can speak to that aspect as well. And it's true, a lot of people down county will, it's too far to go to take a dip, especially with all the lakes down there. But really I wanted to just address a couple of things here. I'm here mostly as a taxpayer. And what you've outlined tonight, it's, the cost benefit ratio isn't very favorable to keeping that pool open the way it is. And so I would have to agree to that extent. I know that, you know, communities that have, counties that have amenities like pools, it's a pretty good draw, but if we can't afford it, I mean, it seems to wipe out any kind of amenity. I really appreciated Commissioner Krupa's history background on how this pool got started, but I go back a little bit more in history and I think of when our county got started and the amenities, really the, really the good amenities would be things alike, does Grand Traverse County have health and safety standards? Does it have snow removal? Those are the type of needs that I thought basically governments were supposed to be involved in rather than, you know, the, if I could say that I have a need, I have a need for a 1957 Corvette. And you guys aren't in the, the wish fulfilling business here. But I think that needs, does government really exist to provide services or does it exist to provide needs? And I think it would be wise for the county, I don't believe we're living in the best economic times and if we can't afford this pool, I think you touched on something I didn't, wasn't aware of before, but if other entities like the college or the city or all of that could be brought back into it, then I'd say there might be a chance for a pool. But if they don't come back in, I don't think having cookie sales and raising money for the pool are going to do it because that's going to have to be done on a yearly basis. And with that $44 million mention that it's going to cost, I don't see how we're going to keep that pool open unless we get some big stakes people into the game here. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Come on down.
Good evening. I'm Jill Rarick from East Bay Township. I appreciate all the different commentary that, you know, the commissioners have had. Bob's got a point. Sunny, you've got a good point. You know, we probably maybe at the bottom line do need more than two pools here in the area. And Alyssa, you know, great job for thinking about, you know, kind of the bigger picture of things and bringing up that history because it's always very telltale-ing. I would like, it's, it's becoming more real and obvious to the medical community. And I worked in healthcare and hospitals for 25, 30 years, that having recreation is really more than recreation now. It's healthy living and it's a need. It's kind of getting beyond want now. There's more evidence now and proof that we've got to relieve our stress. We have to have these healthy activities in our community in order really frankly to have solid families and to frankly spend less money. Every day at Munson Medical Center in any hospital in the United States, 80% of what is lying in a bed, the patients that are there are, can directly be connected to long-term abuse of the body in some way, shape, or form. And whether it's food or alcohol or nicotine or whatever it is, it could be traced back 80%. Think about the money, okay? So if anything, realize that this is becoming more of a need to have this kind of easy access to swimming in our area. And, and pivoting here a little bit, I remember several years ago when Munson Medical Center was struggling and the board was struggling and deciding whether they wanted to hook up with Butterworth, or not Butterworth, Spectrum Health. She tells you how old I am. Spectrum Health and merge forces a little bit or with the University of Michigan and they were entertaining others. And that board was struggling, just like this commission is struggling with, okay, what do we do with this pool and some of these other things? Finally, somebody from the public, just as some of these people here are tonight and as Alyssa mentioned, just ask. The community will come through. And the board members at Munson, you know, when that was all going down, the people and the leaders in this community stood up and talked to the board and said, we didn't know things were this way. We, and we do want to help. And they did come through. And if, as you know.
Thank you.
Munson did not, did not go through with U of M or with Spectrum. So reach out, branch out. You need that creativity. Don't take all the burden on yourselves. There are other people in town. Talk with Munson.
Thank you.
Okay?
Talk with Munson. Anyone else? All right. Moving on. This is our second opportunity for general public comment. No one is stampeding to the podium. Commissioner reports.
I have a special report.
All righty.
This is how slow I am. I'm trying to pull up the email. I received an email from Pete Doran and his wife, who are the heads of the Clock Tower Restoration Fund. And I wanted to announce, if I can find, I wish I was as good at this as my kids are. Okay. Dear, I'm on the committee for the, the Historic Bell Tower, which some of you probably hear ringing now, which was pretty neat. But just as an update to my last report, dear committee members, great news, we received a $20,000 grant from the Beederman Foundation. We've asked Danny Brown for a breakdown of the costs for the replacement of the clock components and the lighting so we can see what we can accomplish with this $20,000. And we will be meeting, at another meeting next month to find that out. You know, one, one donor stepped forward to essentially complete Phase 2 of that. So that's pretty neat. And I just wanted to give a big round of applause to both Karen and Pete Doran, Ed Calott, Ken and Joan Richman, Bernie and Catherine Riker, Gary Scheike amongst Danny Brown, who has been a, a great help to that. And I also wanted just to let everyone know that this weekend, Sunday from 12 to 5 at the Historic Barnes Park is the big community open house. It's all free. If you haven't been out there, go. It is so cool. They have a visitor's center. You can rent and have events there. And the barns are gorgeous. You can have a wedding there. And they're going to be finishing it. They have a walled garden and, and all kinds of really neat things going on. And for sure, go out there even if you can't get to it. HistoricBarnsPark.com, one word. And the last thing I just wanted to say was on Friday, I was able to attend Lieutenant Agaruda's funeral for Metro Fire and I just wanted to make sure that we commended our Central Dispatch employees once again, as many who maybe don't, have never been to a first responder funeral, Central Dispatch calls in their last call. And it is a moment when, I mean, I just want to cry thinking about it. It was, it was really something. So thanks to Central Dispatch for, for offering that community service. And Lieutenant Agaruda's family truly appreciated it.
Any other commissioner committee reports? Commissioner Wheelock?
I know that you had requested whether or not we could cancel Public Health and Safety next week because a number of you will be out of town. I have met with Chris and with Wendy. The only thing that was pressing on the Public Health and Safety agenda is some documentation that has to be put in place for the recertification of the Health Department. And what I'm going to do and what I've asked to do is to have Wendy, that packet is about 100 pages thick. It will be forwarded to you sometime the first of next week. And I'm going to ask that it be put on public or resource management's agenda for immediate effect. I, like everyone else, probably even more so, hate things for immediate effect, but the fact that I can get you that packet of information sometime early next week so as that you'll have an opportunity to review it before we meet a week from next Wednesday at our M&amp;A, I'm hoping that we can, we can get this taken care of because we need to get this in place for the recertification of the Health Department. And that was the only thing that was pressing on our Public Health and Safety agenda. And Wendy assures me that we will have the packet early in the week. And I'm going to move, cancel, therefore we will cancel Public Health and Safety for next week, but that key piece of information will be provided to you for immediate effect at the R&amp;A meeting.
Any other commissioner committee reports? Notices. I don't know if this comes under notices, but I'll stick it under notices. The city commission is going to be taking a look at TIF 2, probably by August. And I would like to have a discussion on our M&amp;A, whether or not we as a board want to communicate with them our feelings, one way or another, on TIF 2. Whether or not they end it, whether they continue it, whether they reset it, there are several options. So I want to put that on our M&amp;A's agenda for June and I'm just mentioning it now so you can start to look into it and think about it. All righty. Anybody else have any notices?
For Bob, was there any update in the contract with the road commission?
Oh, yeah, I did communicate with Carrie Zottis today and we do have a draft for you and that should be going out soon. I wanted to make this sure that she was all set with it.
Okay.
And I think that's supposed to be on the agenda for our M&amp;A.
You can have a dandy.
Let's just load it up. Chris Kramer is listening since she organizes me so much better.
Do we have a need for a closed session, Dean?
No.
All right. With that, we are adjourned.
I didn't get my magnet to actually work.
I don't know, whenever Greg gets around. I don't know, whenever Greg gets around.